Good evening, everyone. It is 6:01 and calling this City Council Special Meeting Thursday, August 13th, to order. All council are present. Thank you, council, for being here. And what I'm going to do is ask that everybody stand and I'm going to ask for a moment of silence before we do the pledges. Let me explain why. Last night, we lost a longtime citizen of Garden Ridge and somebody that had dedicated quite a bit of his family's time and his time and even some treasure to the city. And I'm referring to Mr. Ray Pittson. He passed away last night. Ray was a commissioner on our water commission. He was an officer in the Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. He was an officer in the Lions Club. He was an officer in the Comal County Crime Stoppers. And I can tell you, so he wasn't just a member of these organizations, but he was very active. I've spent a lot of time with him in all of those organizations. And I can tell you that we spent a lot of time in a lot of different places actively engaged in the activities of those organizations. So he put a lot of time and a lot of love into the city of Garden Ridge. And we lost him last night. So I ask you to be thinking about Pam, his wife. And his daughter is here. They were with him last night. His daughter Cathy. So if you would, please rise. We'll have a moment of silence and then we'll do the pledge. Thank you, everyone. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you, everyone. Okay, a couple of things before we get started. If you are sitting either by yourself or with family and you can stay six feet away from other people, you do not have to wear a mask. It's not mandatory. You can wear one by all means, but you don't have to. And that's why we have the signs in the back, because we have room for more people. They're not here, but if there were more people and they ended up getting close, they would then have to be putting their mask on. So defend your six feet, I guess, if you take your mask off, but feel free to not wear it if you so desire. And that also accounts for the way we have the place laid out. Just wanted to make sure we all are on the same page with that. A couple of other things I want to say right up front, I need to say right up front, is if you notice on the agenda, we always have citizens' comments before we go into any other items. The reason citizens' comments aren't at the beginning this time is because the only thing on the agenda is the public hearing and the budget adoption. So there would be nothing else to talk about in the beginning. However, just in case there's something that somebody wants to have as a cleanup item at the end, citizens' comments are still, as customary, at the end of the meeting as well. So you see that you will have an opportunity to speak for the only topic we're going to talk about today during the public hearing. And you do not have to have signed up for that. And then at the end, you do not have to sign up for that one either. Another couple of things I want to explain is items 4B and 4C on the agenda, if you're here for those, I don't want you to wait till we get to them to find out we're not going to cover them. We're not going to be, I'm going to be taking those off the agenda. We couldn't take them off with an amendment to the agenda because it was inside the 72 hours. But the reason why it's being taken off is because the petitioner for the variance and for the special use permit has rescinded those requests. So there's nothing for the council to receive from planning and zoning, and there's nothing for the council to deliberate on or to make any decision on. And the last thing I'll say is that we, because of the pandemic, we are offering people to have write-in citizens' comments, either during a public hearing or in a citizens' comment period. But we still are adhering to you get to speak once, whether it's you gave the comments to our city secretary and she reads them, like she will tonight, or you stand at the podium, or what I should say, our podium, the provisional podium, which is the white table there. But it's one or the other. It can't be both. So you're going to just get to speak one time, in essence. So if you do speak up there and you do have written comments, we will be striking those written comments. We won't be reading those, simple enough, just to be fair. Okay, so moving on to item number four, approvals and authorizations. Following items for discussion, consideration, and action, proposed fiscal year 2021 budgets for the City of Garden Ridge and General Fund, Water Company Operation and Maintenance Fund, Interest in Sinking Fund, and Capital Improvements Fund. And for those that are keeping track, this is the public hearing and deliberation following when council has already been presented this budget and has already filed it with the city secretary. We've gone through the requisite number of days for people to be able to take a look, have comments, call us, write us, and tell us what they think, whatever they choose. And then we have the public hearing, and then it's up for council's decision on adopting. And they are four separate budgets, and it'll be obvious as we go through that. So without further ado, I have a presentation where I explain any intention. Go to the next slide. All right, could you pull that down for a second and take out and go to the first 2021 budget proposal? Yeah, go right to slide eight. Thank you. So the intent of this is to go through each one of the budgets, but to talk about them in terms of operations, to say, okay, so what have we as a city put our money and resources towards in the past budget? And how is that going? And then what are we doing in a 2021 budget to either continue with those or to springboard off of those to go further to the future? And that'll happen, the general fund obviously is the largest and most involved, but then the water fund, and then the interest in sinking and capital improvement funds are at the end. So if, and I'm going to go ahead and control this now, all right? So first of all, the big picture on our budget. We, without a doubt, have had substantial and significant progress on the 2020 budget. And we had an amendment that allowed us also to work the 2021 budget. But very, very important that we consider what we've done, look at our goals, and look at what we're doing to build on those successes. Personal expenses are up this year again, and I'll show you, but you know, it's the cost of doing business with benefits, whether it be medical or unemployment insurance or whatever it happens to be, but they're all expenses that are cost of doing business and important benefits to our folks. So pay, and then there's a 3%. We bake in a 3% increase. It covers a cost of living and a pay performance program. It's a program we started last year, y'all approved, and it's been very successful. But that 3% is what we put into the budget because we don't know necessarily what the cost of living is going to be quite yet. We'll know very shortly. And that'll be everybody, and staff will get that. And then the department heads work the pay performance. And they're finalizing their performance reports this week. And then there's also, you're going to see a set aside for implementation of pay equity, grades and step program. We talked about that. We are, we want to make sure that we remain fair and competitive in this area, as well as we want to build in an opportunity for grades and steps program. The long and short of that is that we want to make sure that somebody that's been working in a job for 10 years isn't being paid the exact same amount that somebody just started. So having some grades and some steps in there that are tied to performance, as well as qualifications, certifications, whatever's appropriate for that department and that person's position. And something that will be managed, of course, by the department heads. The reason it's a set aside right now is because we're still working on the system, just like when we worked on the pay performance and we worked on the personnel policy. And it took us a long time because we wanted to get it right, and we wanted to make sure that it was understandable and fair. We're doing the same thing with the pay, with the grades and steps program and the equity. There's stipends for the council and mayor that are in there, and we'll talk more about those. And then benefits, you see what's increased. Medical vision, workers' comp, state unemployment insurance, and retirement all have increased. And dental, life, disability, dismemberment, long-term, short-term disability, those are all, no change on those. Some more stuff, the reserves, this is always important. It's a great measure for, and actually, it's a measure used by anybody that would be loaning the city money if we were going out for a bond. We're not right now. So we keep track of that, and we also want to make sure that we have, like you do at your own home, you know, basically, emergency money. Reserves, 9.9 months for the general fund. And then I've listed the three preceding years, so you can see where we've been, you know, 9.1 last year and the year before, so we're up a little bit, 9.9. 13.3 for the water fund, and you see how that plays out. I'll also be talking here in a few minutes what we have for some plans for a few of those dollars in there to ensure we don't incur any more debt. As I said, they're building up some of the funds. The debt load, debt load is $11.7 million right now, regardless of what I think about, I wish we didn't have any debt at all. That's certainly not a possibility, but what I can tell you is that Garden Ridge is extraordinarily healthy and relatively low when it comes to the percentage of estimated appraised value at 1.48. 1.48 is an extraordinarily good debt load. You see bond markets of, you know, if they say that you're lower than 5%, then they're really happy and they think that you're a great opportunity to loan money to with low risk. And municipalities being capped at 10% in Garden Ridge, excuse me, in the state of Texas. Conservative philosophy is without a doubt the bedrock of our budget. And you see it a lot of places in the budget where we'll tend to be pretty conservative about what we think our revenue will be and will also be very conservative about what we think things will cost us, because we just don't want to be surprised and we don't want to be in a situation where we have to start tapping into reserves because we have budget shortfalls and come back to you, council, and say that we're coming short of money. So I talked about the debt ratio, and just for perspective, you see what the debt ratios are of some cities around here. I will often show some comparisons, you know, I did it with the tax rate, and I'm doing it with this as well. But it's important for a couple of reasons. One, because it does lend some perspective. And also, in case somebody says, you know, we just owe so much money. Well, 1.48 is a pretty darn good debt ratio. And you can see the debt ratios of the cities around us. So now going, that was overall budget. Now talking about the general fund, just the general fund. Balance to a surplus. If you recall this, when I presented this to you before, it said 5541. But the motion from Council Place Five asked to put $500 more into Public Works for the park, and so that's why it's now 5,041. So balance to surplus, not much of a surplus, but nevertheless balanced. Some assumptions, we're estimating a 3% tax revenue growth, and that's probably pretty conservative, and saying that revenues and expenditures versus the 2020 amended budget are pretty flat. Do you see the comparison of all departmental budgets increased? And you can see the numbers here. I have an asterisk next to admin at 11% because, and then it says 5%. And the reason why it says 11% is all the money for the merit step and the personnel program is parked right now, and you'll see that in the budget, is parked in the admin budget. So anybody else that is a beneficiary of that increase, their budget's going to go up, and admin will end up being less than half of what's listed here. But I wanted to be completely clear on what the numbers say right now is 11%. And so you see police department, 0.06, but will increase significantly once we do the merit grade and step program. And this is what pretty much I told you right there, because they're the holding area for all the increases in departmental pay. We did that because we didn't know how it was going to play out and how it was going to be put into different, and we didn't want to put them in the individual areas and then find out that it was inadequate or it was an overage. So that's the revenue, or excuse me, the big fund, the big picture for the general fund. This is for the water fund. Water fund's balanced to a surplus of $1,700. Increased revenue, really low increase in revenue, although we're actually already seeing more of an increase. But again, and rightfully so, we're very conservative about this because you just, you don't know what's going to happen with weather and all that. You see the water sales increase and increased by, offset by projected interest revenue. And that's something that is definitely an artifact of the economy, which is an artifact of the pandemic. Interest rates have gone really, really low. And you'll see that a few places in our budget where the interest, and we're making an assumption that it's coming back up, but we're not saying that it's going to be a booming economy necessarily. So we're still conservative about that. So the water budget increase, just a mere 0.2, largest increase being in Personnel Services. So as I told you, looking at what you approved in 2020 and how we springboard off of that into 2021. Personnel, it was the first full year of the pay and performance program. As I said, everybody got a 1.7 cost of living. Again, we don't know what that is until for another month or so, but last year it turned out to be 1.7. So 1.3% of what was, the remainder was available to the leadership to tie them to evaluations, and they did exactly that, and it worked out really well. And that was the first time that you, council, put in the hands of our department heads the ability to manage their department more. And I applaud that. I thank you for approving that, and I think it was very important. Citizen communication, government transparency, video live streaming, online accessibility, and all the meetings being indexed is just a great thing. And it enables hundreds of people to watch these meetings for whatever reason they're not here, either because they don't want to come or because they don't feel like they can come because of the situation right now. So it's kind of, you know, we didn't intend for it to be accommodating a pandemic, but if you could say anything about it, it's good timing. What ended up happening was we had this system worked out and put in place when the pandemic hit. So now, a lot of people can watch these things and not have to be there, be here, but yet they can still have, we can still have full transparency on what's going on. E-government's another thing that we worked and put the billing system and payment options into place to be able to get people, to be able to do it all online. And it's not just water bills, it's pet registrations, it's permits, because our goal has been to make it that it's available to anybody at any time. So if somebody's working and they have trouble getting here during the day, or they just have a lot of other things to do, they can do it online in the middle of the night if they want. So we want to make this available and easy for everyone. And again, didn't intend for it to be the timing it was, but it ended up being that we had this completed, finished, and in place and worked out when the pandemic hit. So now people that don't want to come up here and pay their bills the way they had been for years could do it online. Continuity of operations, we always fund emergency management. And the emergency management has been providing resources for the contingency ops that we've been doing in COVID. The good news for some of that, and our financial manager has been doing an extraordinary job, and she talked about this at the last regular council meeting, but a lot of that money is coming back to the city. But we had the money in emergency management to be able to handle some of the things, you know, the hand sanitizing stations and the extra PPE and those kind of things. We also worked and wrote and tested remote work policies. I think that's really a big deal. It worked out, and it was useful for, again, the pandemic, but the fact is, is we wanted to have that anyway because we wanted to be able to deal with that with whatever happened, whether it was an issue with the building or whether it was an issue with, you know, something that was farther removed, like a pandemic or whatever. But the point being that we think it's very important that the citizens have their government working and available under as many circumstances as possible. And so we not only wrote the procedures and policies for it, but we ended up getting, test them, and we used some budget to purchase some equipment so people could VPN in on laptops and that kind of thing that we had never done before. We learned a lot with that, and it's been very successful, and our admin folks really did a bang-up job with that. Library equipped to provide services in the COVID environment. Our library did an extraordinary job of ensuring that the library stayed in business, if you will. And with the PPE, with Plexiglas, with equipment to sanitize, and all the things that they did with the attitude that COVID wasn't going to stop the library. And it was wonderful to see, and we put some resources, as you know, to that. Water company made sure they were on a sustainable path with the new water rates that became effective the beginning of 2020. After all the other stuff that happened, the fact is, the new stable water rates happened effective 2020. Some more successes, security. Paul Davis Park upgraded with video surveillance, a big deal. Families know that there's video surveillance out there now, and there's some accountability out there, and it also enables us to protect our investment. As we build more things, as we put more stuff out there, the video system can protect that investment a little bit more. Password management system, we delivered that. We still have some work to kind of roll it out to some folks, but that's another security thing that's a big deal in the world of cybersecurity. Studies and analyses, wastewater system designed with extensive external coordination. Still in the middle of that, but a lot of resources were put to that to make sure that we were moving in the right way and maintaining the interests of the city. Parklands expanded, facilities enhanced. We did that in 2020 and increased child safe zones. And there's very little of our city now that isn't in a child safe zone. We're still working on a couple of places, and I'm hoping that within the coming months we'll be able to make that happen as well. Old City Hall complex, we replaced the HVAC, and we closed out, finally, closed out the capital improvement program from a few years ago, but it trailed into 2020, but it's finally closed out. So some things, we're still working. The cross-training and improving the bench strength, it's something that I've been talking a lot about over the last three years to make sure that at any given time, if somebody wasn't here to do the job because of whatever reason, if they were sick or family members sick, or some kind of thing happened, that other people could step in their place. And we're working that. The effort's been slowed by COVID a little bit, but also just by vacancies. We've had some vacancies, and, you know, it could be argued that COVID was the reason why some people weren't looking for jobs or applying for jobs. But we're working on it, and we're making some progress, but we are still working on filling out the staff. And another thing that we put as a priority that we talked about last year was training, making sure that our folks are getting professional training, leadership training, and all those things that will enable them to better serve the folks that they're working with and working for. And a lot of those classes were just canceled because of COVID. So we'll continue working on that. Continuity of operations, the next thing is making sure that we can video teleconference with appropriate software and equipment. It's interesting, because when we first did all of this stuff, we made the decision to not do that, and then we were faced with, okay, now we need to do this video teleconferencing. Maybe we should have thought about that. It didn't cost us any extra or anything, but just the point is, is that it ended up trailing into what we're doing now. And in fact, we just installed some equipment in the back and kind of working out some of the procedures and some of the kinks on it to make sure that at any time that we need to do any video teleconferencing, we can do it and do it right. Studies and analyses, zoning and water ordinances are being worked, and they've been, both of these have been, or there's multiple ordinances in it, but they've been worked for a couple of years. We've had some experts helping particularly with the zoning work. The Water Master Plan is in work, Transportation Master Plan, we still need to do a final review and get the Impact Fee Committee working on that. We have done water meter system analysis, and you, just at the last council meeting, approved the bid solicitation. So we've been working on the preparation for all that and making that happen. Same thing with wastewater bid solicitation package prep, and that has been an expense with, you know, engineering, legal, that kind of thing as well. Still working security. Another one of our issues with cameras has been integrating all the different camera systems to make sure they're all on the same sheet and that the proper people can see all the cameras at any time. That's something that's been a gap for quite a while, but we're working that, and that'll be solved very, very soon. Network server upgrades, last time we met in a special council meeting, we were right in the middle of that, and we just had some upgrades, security, as well as just equipment, server upgrades. And we're just putting the finishing and final touches on that to ensure that we do those things. User access, acceptable use protocols, to make sure that people are using the computers for what they need to and what we need them to use them for. Password management system, I talked about. And then workflow management, a lot of work was put in by the team to select Cartograph to be our workflow management. I'm excited about the potential with that, to be able to track jobs, track equipment, track manpower, track supplies, track work orders. It's just, it's a great system, and our water manager and our Public Works Director and our admin staff put a lot of work into determining what was the best to fit our needs. We had a different system that we were starting to use, and we decided that it wasn't economical and it wasn't going to meet our needs. So we transitioned to Cartograph, and it was a great move on their part. Another, some more continuing and some new, the e-government and outreach, you know, it's appropriate now, we're talking about reducing touch operations, so we're working that pretty hard. And we have some work to do in 2021 with website. The website has so much on it that at any given time, you go on it, you'll go, wait a minute, that's not, that needs to be updated, or wait a minute, that's not quite right, or that link isn't quite right. And it's real easy for it to scape us since we don't have a dedicated person doing it. And since we've been short in the front in admin, one person that would be doing it has been doing somebody else's job instead, and you know how that goes. It's just the way it is. And that ends up taking a backseat to some of the more critical functions. But we're looking very hard at applying some more resources to that in 2021 to better serve our citizens. We're in the middle of ordinance reviews and rewrites because we want to complete a review of all the ordinances. And, you know, sometimes what happens is somebody will say, hey, do you know the ordinance says this? And we're looking, oh, yeah. And that's the reason it comes to you. And what we would like to do, and what our goal is, and what we, when we get a full staff, is we're going through each ordinance, one by one, working to ensure that they're timely, that they're appropriate for our situation now, and then bringing them to y'all to be able to review. And we've talked about giving you a long time to review all of those. Plat permit, variance, recording, and organizing. We're looking at obtaining some license software to be able to help us integrate all those. It's just one of those things that for a long time was a bit ad hoc, how we kept track of this stuff, but we need to have a better system, one that doesn't rely on the memory of any one person. And then we're looking at possibly getting some third-party assistance on that, but that's a big deal. Every once in a while, that ends up being an issue where we have to search through volumes and volumes of files to find something. Emergency management, improve the training, education, procedures, and relationships. And I, being in the middle of that for the last four months, I can tell you that we have quite a bit to learn. We're doing great, but we could learn some more stuff and work in the relationships as well. The council stipend creation, having the mayor being paid a stipend of $250 per pay period beginning the next election cycle, so whoever the mayor is next. And then the budget impact in 2021 would be 2,750. That's how much it would, the entire effect would be. In 2022, it'd be $6,500. And then council, $50 per meeting, beginning in May 2022. So not the next cycle, but the cycle after that. So then, the entire council gets paid at the same time instead of half, or part of it and then part of it. The budget impact in 2021, budget is zero. Budget in 2022 is then $3,000. So the total budget impact for 2021 is $2,700. Total budget impact for 2022 is $9,500. And it's split 75-25, general and water funds. And it fascinates me that people think there's something nefarious about And it fascinates me that people think there's something nefarious about splitting it between the general and the water funds. And they've never asked, so they don't know, that the water company is run by our staff and the water company board of directors are the people that are sitting up here. And so the water company is a function of the council and of the staff. And the staff, we have staff that are paid by the water company and we have some staff that are paid by part of the water company and part of the general fund because the effort that we put into, all of us put into the water company is something that, it used to be the water company didn't pay for any of that. And you recall, a few years ago, I started saying that we need to fully load the water company and the water company needs to pay the bills and it had no cost or very little cost for personnel. And all of the admin and all of the financial management and all of the leadership and everything else is all, was all not being paid for by anybody other than the taxpayers. And that's the other thing that some people may not understand is the difference between the general fund and the water fund. The general fund is revenue from taxes, the water fund is revenue from water sales. And so they are significantly different and that's the reason why saying that 25% of the budget of this stipend would be from the water fund because, again, this council is the board of directors for the water company. And then implementation, again, tied to the terms of, new terms of office. So anybody voting on that is not voting themselves or raised or voting for the position to have a stipend for whomever ends up being in that position. So continuing for 2021, also personnel staffing, we're working to bring it up to full strength as we go through some of the budgets. You're going to see the impact of that where the last year's budget, we had some money that was left over because we didn't have people, you know, it's a heck of a way to save money, just not hire people into positions. It makes it really painful for everybody else that's left behind that's doing the work, but that's what happened. And continue to develop a full inter-office support, as I've been talking about, the bench strength, as I call it. Personnel training, again, now bringing it back up. We're assuming that sometime soon, this two will pass and we'll be able to get people back out to get some training and get some certifications and get some leadership training as well. Personnel system, the next step in, and I believe it's an important step in this is to, for retention incentives and have a little bit of upward mobility. And again, what you did last year was a great stepping off of that and that was to tie some incentive to performance and allow it to be a tool that leaders could use in their departments and I think that is great. Now, the next step is to look at market equity and then the personnel grades and steps that I described before. Again, this now becomes another opportunity for people to have some incentive and it also gives an opportunity for our department heads to have some tools in their toolkit that they didn't have before. And important, we were saying that if they develop it by the time we kick off the 2021 budget, then the money's there. And if it's not developed yet, the money will sit there until they do develop it. But we're going to do it the same way we did it with the personnel, the personnel policy where we'll all come together and we spent many, many, many hours and our HR spent even more and we, double-digit numbers of drafts and everything else. So I can tell you, that team is standing by to start to work the same thing again with this grades and steps program. And then there's going to be subsets of that because individual departments will then need to determine what's their unique criteria. Clearly, the criteria for a police officer is different than a criteria for somebody that works in the water department as far as certifications and levels and that kind of thing. And so we'll all work that together, but they'll be working also for their own unique criterion. And again, that's budgeted lump sum in the admin, but it's also in water because water, again, is a completely separate budget, completely separate, if you will, color of money. Continuing also 2021, the two projects that I'm going to talk about here in a minute, the pressurized sewer line on 2252 and the AMI system, the water meter reading system, they're both in the solicitation phase now. You approved that last time and they're not in the budget. And the reason they're not in the budget is because of the way we're going to, the way, I'll show you just in a minute. But they're planned, they're not budgeted quite yet because we actually don't know how much they are yet. I mean, you approved for us to go out with a solicitation. We have some ideas of how much it's going to cost, but we don't know exactly yet. And the bids obviously are going to be received in this calendar year and nothing is going to be done until you are presented with those bids and you approve, you approve the, or accept the bids. Funding is going to come from the general and water fund reserve based on that amended 2020 you did and the post-2021 budget reserve levels. The levels that we believe that the reserves will be in and have every reason to believe they'll be in. So, and this is important to me personally, that no debt will be incurred. We're not going to have to borrow any money and we're not going to have to incur any extra cost by borrowing any money. We have, I firmly believe we do have the money to do this. And not only that, but they, we project that they're going to actually repay the money that we take out of the reserve funds. I put in there durations TBD because we don't know yet and it would be foolish to make a prediction on how long, but we do intend to repay the reserve funds that, the funds that are being taken out from both general and water fund. But that said, even if that didn't happen, we believe it'll happen, but even if it didn't happen, we're not incurring, I don't believe, any risk because we're still maintaining adequate reserves, even when we use reserves to fund these two programs. That's a really important point because we're not, we don't want to stick our neck out and use reserve money hoping we're going to get money back to make sure that we stay comfortable with our reserves. And so that, and I'll show that to you in just a second. So the reserves are going to maintain strong and still maintain higher, higher than what's generally accepted minimums per our auditor and per whatever, what all the money people, you know, the financial people tell us is the acceptable minimums. We're well over those. So the projects are the advanced metering infrastructure and the 22 pressurized wastewater system, initial startup. So talk about the AMI first. Very important, this is, you've heard it from the water commission, you've heard it from the water company. This is about replacing the infrastructure because the system that we have now is a drive-by system, but unfortunately, that system's starting to fail. The meters are not failing, the meters are working just fine, but what's happening is the water, the water meter sending system that sends to the laptop as the water company folks are driving by, isn't sending the signal. So that means they have to get out and they have to read the meters. That's a lot of labor that we don't account for in a very small and, and actually understaffed water company right now, but even if they were fully staffed, it'd be a lot more work than we account for with our staff size. So we're looking at, we need to replace this. It does replace the meters, it replaces the infrastructure. It's something that we've wanted to do for a long time, but it's been very expensive. But as these systems have been around a little while, as you would expect, the cost has come down. Also, we've worked away, we don't have to borrow any money to do this, as I said. So this is a great positive thing for the citizens because they will now have complete visibility into their water usage every day. They can go online and they can look and see what's going on and they'll be able to see what they're using for water. We'll be able to see it as well, we'll be able to put alarms and flags on it to be able to say, hey, you're using a lot more water than you normally do. You good? You all right? We're also, because of this, it's going to be collecting data. We won't have the delay in having to go out and do the laptop reads that you're familiar with and water, we expect that water leak adjustments are going to become nearly non-existent because we're going to have such ability to see these well in advance and the customers themselves will be able to see these well in advance. And then if we do have any issues, we'll be able to look at the data sitting here in the office and not even have to go down to the meters. So a wonderful opportunity. Pay for it out, projecting to pay for it out of the water reserve funds. The water reserve funds have more than adequate amount of money to pay for the fund, to fund the project while maintaining the set-asides. And so I'll give you the numbers real quick. The budgeted reserve level in 2021, we're projecting to be that. And then we say, okay, so how much do we need to keep to make sure that we aren't running any risk? And this is going to be different when you see, when I start talking about the general fund, but the reason why this is different is the general fund does not service debt. General fund pays to interest and sinking fund, a separate budget to pay debt. This water fund, or this water company pays its own debt. And so we want to make sure that the water company, number one, can have, you know, the old six months of operation kept, retained, and then also want to be able to make sure that we can service the debt. The first debt payment that we have to make is 83% of the entire year's debt. So we could have said six months and it would have been a lower number, but we thought that it would be smarter to say, we want to pay the first debt payment, which happens in February. So the first debt payment, you see the number there and you also see the six months of operations, which would be different if we just said six months of operations and debt. It'd be less, but we, again, being very conservative, you see that number, $1,083,000 and change. So the remaining available for the AMI project is, the remaining available in the reserves to be able to put towards an AMI project and still be able to retain the reserves that we believe we need to retain would be $747,000 and change. We expect that the AMI project is going to cost $700,000. We actually are hoping that it costs less and because what we did was we surveyed the field for some prices, but there was no competition involved. And now that you approved going out with the bid, the proposals for bids, that we expect now a little bit of competition could be a good thing and it may even be more advantageous to us than what we put there. So again, being very conservative. So that's funding the AMI, not going into debt. The next one is the pressurized wastewater system on 2252. And again, wanting to be able to do that without incurring any debt, this is the money to start the project. And council, all along, you've always been insistent and we have programmed and planned it that not only will it not incur debt, but that the folks that hook up to it will pay for it. And the impact fees that they'll pay and the connection fees as well as the service fees and everything else will pay for this project. And why do I say that? For two reasons. One, because we're not paying for it, they're paying for it. But the other reason is because we are putting the seed money in, which is what I'm going to show you, but then as they hook up and they pay for it, that money comes back to us and it gets put back into the reserves. So again, we don't know the timeline of that, so that's why I said TBD for bringing it back, but we have every expectation and absolutely a reasonable expectation that the money's going to come back and we'll be able to put it into, back into the reserves and that's our plan. So the difference is, is now that we've used the water fund money for that one project, we don't want to dip into the water fund reserves for anything else, but we have a lot of general fund reserves that can be loaned. And it is a loan on record, it's an audited loan, that then the money comes back from the water fund to the reserve fund as the water fund has the money. And it's not tied to what I described as far as impact fees and everything from the system being, and people attaching to the system. It's tied to literally the water fund's health. As the water fund maintains that reserve that we talk about that's being, that's required, when they go over what we believe is required, money will start coming back to the general fund. So I think it's a very open, but a very reasonable way to save a lot of money in getting the bonds and loans and then having to pay all the interest on them for many years like we'll look at when we look at the INS. General fund reserves are more than adequate to fund the project while retaining, again, auditor recommended set-asides. The budgeted reserve, now I'm going to show you the same basic thing that I did for the water fund, but this is what we have in the general fund and how we're going to use it. So this is what the, what the expected reserve in the general fund is. This is now, again, since they don't, they, the general fund doesn't pay its own interest on bonds, it comes out of the INS, well, and they do pay it, but it goes into the INS. The only thing that we think is important is to maintain the six months of operational reserve. And again, auditors and all the people that are the money experts out there all say that that's the way to do it, is to maintain six months. And so that's the six months reserves. So what you have remaining is $981,000 available to loan to the water fund. Again, the expected cost is $950,000 and so that is under the amount of money that we see as the remaining slash available to loan to the water fund. So put a lot of, put a lot of thought, work and effort into making sure that we could do these projects and yet not incur any debt for our city. So that is where we've been, where we are right now and where we're going. And we will now go through the individual, the individual sheets for the budget and I'm going to do it the same way. I'm going to do it a little bit faster and funnier because we've already gone through this, but I'll very briefly talk about the front page, then go through each one of the subsequent pages of revenue and then expenses for each department. I'll stop at each page and see if you have any questions, so we don't build up too many questions. And then at the end of every department's page, I'll ask again, do you have any questions? And do you have any questions for the department head themselves? That's why they're all here for your questions and any comments you have. Then I'll go back, if I remember, to the front page to kind of roll it up and we'll do that for each one of these. After we do, after we do the general fund, I'll then ask for, if you want to, if you want to go ahead and do the motion to approve, and the same thing with each fund. I'll do them separately so you don't have to, you don't have to remember that you had a comment on the second one and we're on the fourth one still or whatever. Okay? So if you would, turn to the general fund summary for, and it says amended budget and proposed budget. So we're bouncing this proposed budget off the amended budget that you approved at our last budget meeting. So a couple of things, you see the percentage of expenditures that changed, you see off to the right there, a few of those numbers. Expenditures, a big one is the admin expenditures, but again, I'm telling you, that comes into play with the personnel system that we're working on. The police, it really isn't, I mean, it is a 43.8% expenditure increase, but it's an increase over the amended budget that accounted for two positions being vacant. So we amended the budget because for a long period of time, they had vacant positions and so to clean up the books, we amended the budget, but I certainly wouldn't want you to think that they were going 43% more than normal because if you go back to the regular 2020 budget before we amended it because of those vacancies, you see that it's flat. It's literally a few hundred dollars. So that's something that might pique your interest if you see that number. Then restricted balances, remember the restricted balances, we work a lot on those. We were able to take security cameras for the park out of child safety and that's a great thing and we have more money still in that account that's available for more child safety items and surveillance enhancements, that kind of thing. The court security, we spent some money out of the restricted funds for court security, particularly because we had some extra expense because of COVID and the way we had to do the court. And so that's still, we have some money available there. And then the public education grant capital funds, the PEG funds, the, we did spend a significant amount of money to enable us to reach people right now. The stuff that you see in here and the stuff that we're streaming and, but then, so we spent $100,000, but $15,000 got added again this year and we're still looking for, we spent some of that money on recurring fees, we have a few subscription kind of things to keep this stuff going. We have to, we're using that as well as some more planned upgrades. So if you would, I will come back to this front page, so I'm not going to pause there just yet. I just wanted to highlight a few things for, that will kind of set the context for some of the pages that we're going to, about to talk about. So if you go to page two, it says general fund revenue. Avalorm taxes, we're backing it down just a little bit from what we had, the principal interest, excuse me, because again, we're, how are we going to do on interest? We're a little bit skeptical on that, but overall, taxes being flat, that's a revenue on taxes. Revenue on franchises, there's the increase to cover the real costs of household hazardous waste is what you see in household hazardous waste fee. That'll be offset when you, when we go into expenses, you'll see the offset. That'll be offset when you, when we go into expenses, you'll see the offset for that. The new rate's going to be point nine eight per, for less than a dollar per household. Remember, we had the issue with household hazardous waste, frankly, just wasn't being done the way it was supposed to for, for a few years and then we found out about it. And we found out that everybody in the world was paying a whole lot more than we were paying. And now we need to get with, with the program, with the law, frankly, and make sure that it's all done right, and that's why it's so much more expensive. Alarm systems, it was budgeted a lot for last year because, because we still had people that were doing their first time alarm permit. But remember, once you've done an alarm permit, you never have to pay for it again. So that's why you see the number goes way down to three hundred. So it's just people that, you know, changing over, new, new homeowners or people that are installing an alarm in their home for the first time. But anybody who already has an alarm isn't paying any alarm fees. You also see tower rentals, a little bit of a difference there and it's because we're still in the negotiation with, with a company that rents one of the companies, well, the company that, that represents some of the companies, I guess is a more appropriate way to say it. Nevertheless, the first page is just the first page of revenue, but anybody have any comments or questions on the first page? Left side, right side? Okay, second page, it's page three, but it's second page of revenue. That first place, the first chunk up there, we're still assuming things are going to go back somewhat to normal. Remember donations, we always budget zero and then whatever somebody donates is, is just a great thing and then we find places for it. The court is pretty much staying flat from what it was budgeted last year. Remember, some of the expenses went down because the, in their, or excuse me, revenues went down because we had less court. But we're assuming it's going to go back up as things get back to normal. Miscellaneous is down a little bit because we, we sold a pretty significant asset in twenty-twenty and next year we're just, we plan on selling a small, little, tiny car and we're only going to get three thousand dollars for it probably, that's what we're budgeting. So compared to the twenty-twenty budget, you see it's pretty, pretty close, three point nine percent. So that is the roll-up of the revenue for general fund, starting on the right side. Questions or comments for revenue on general fund? Okay. Now we're going to go into expenses, department by department. We'll start with general fund admin, on the top, the three percent, that's standard that we always put in and remember, it'll be split up between cost of living and performance. And then the fifty-four, the fifty-four thousand number, that is the holding area for all general fund personnel merit, merit increases as well as the wage and step, or excuse me, step and, and other thing. And also, one thing, again, is the mayor stipend is in there, mayor and city council stipend, excuse me, and has the details there and again, split seventy-five, twenty-five. So in the water fund budget, you see the twenty-five and then in the, in the, the tax part of it is the two thousand dollars. That's why it's split. See, the, the next big section down the bottom of, of personnel services is the stuff I showed you on the slide already. And, and remember, there's an increase in there because not only the cost of, of doing the business with benefits and all that, which you normally would see an increase, but also the increase, putting in the general fund equity grade and, and grade changes, grade and step program, excuse me. Professional services, pretty flat from last year. We, we did prepay some of the projects, and I say prepay, we didn't prepay, but we pushed forward some of the engineering on some of the projects. So we're paying for it ahead of time, so we don't have to pay, we, we won't have that bill later on. So it spikes, it spiked the engineer numbers, the amended numbers and some proposed numbers because of the projects and all the engineering that it costs us to do that. And then city support is pretty flat. That's page four, which is the first page of expenditures in admin. Questions or comments on this page, starting on the left side? Sir, sir, ma'am, sir. Second page of admin expenditures. Staff support, we're looking at it pretty much going back to, to somewhat normal. See that miscellaneous, the bank fees, bringing them down some, that we're not spending as much with the bank either. But then operational support, one thing you see in there is the offset, remember, I told you that there was a revenue of nineteen thousand, here's the offset of the nineteen thousand expenditure for the household hazardous waste. So it, it balances, but it's on two different sheets. And so compared to the twenty-twenty budget, the operational support's flat. Utility support, basically going back to normal, same with maintenance, maintenance services, looking at, going basically back to normal. So the personnel holding account, accounts for a lot of that eleven percent you see down at the expenditures, bottom expenditures of eleven percent. So that is the roll-up of all the general fund expenditures, the two pages. So right side, questions or comments on admin expenditures? Ma'am, sir, sir, ma'am. Next one is a court and it's basically pretty flat. A few movement here and there, but I guess about the only thing, and it's a small percentage wise, but an increase to both our prosecutor and our judge to pay them what we understand, everybody else pays them. We've been getting a, we've been getting a deal. It's still a really good deal for us, they're, they do great work for us and that's seventy-two hundred dollars for each one of them for the year. Both are increasing. So the smaller budget means that six point four is a higher number in percentage wise, but everything is pretty flat in there. So court expenditures is only one page, left side, any questions or comments on court? Sir, ma'am? Okay. Next up is PD, we have two pages for PD. First page, three percent at the top and then the, the expenditures of workman's comp and all that stuff you see down there. And so you see that it's, it's a little flat, it's, it's a bit of an increase because of some of the things down at the bottom of that one section, but again, it's fully loading the staff, that's why it's more by over a hundred thousand dollars than the amended budget. That's important to not really compare it to the amended budget, but then the other, because they were two people down. But also remember, this number will, will almost definitely go up because, and I say almost definitely because it hinges on when we get, when we get the thing done, but it will go up with the, the merit, or excuse me, the equity and the wage and the, I keep calling it wage, step program and, so you'll see that number go up. Staff support back to normal, operational support pretty flat. That's the first page of two for department expenditures. Right side, questions, comments? Second page and the last page for police fund and police expenditures, normal growth on utilities, maintenance services pretty flat. And then operating equipment, it's a drop in the proposed budget for vehicle lease because we're going to transition from leasing vehicles to purchasing vehicles. And the reason we're going to do that is because it actually costs us more to lease the vehicles than to buy the vehicles. But when we first started this, to make sure that our PD had the equipment that they needed and, and deserved, it was much more reachable, if you will, to go into leases. But now that we're fully leased and our whole, whole fleet, it's now actually more expensive to continue these leases than it is to now introduce the purchasing of vehicles and have them own the vehicles instead. And our financial manager spent some time doing some analysis on that and I thank her for that because that's, that's important, an important piece there. So the, the bottom line here, a point one increase over the twenty-twenty budget is a bit artificial because it doesn't reflect the equity step increases that we're talking about, that will come out of the admin budget and come, and flow into the PD budget. So left side, comments, questions for PD? Ma'am, sir? Next one is public works, it's three pages. First one, personnel is pretty standard of what you've heard me say so far with one exception, and that is, I'm pausing because I just realized what I'm about to, it's funny. We're, we're looking at turning the seasonal position into a permanent part-time position and so that's why that increased, yeah, exactly. That's why that increased a little bit more there and that's why that temporary budget goes away. So the temporary budget goes away, but then the overall budget comes up a little bit. So there's three pushes that increase the personnel services budget. One I just mentioned, second one is the three percent cost of living and performance and the third on here is just the increase in medical, et cetera. Remember, that will increase a little bit more because of the wage and step program as well. I keep calling it the, the step program, thank you. Wildlife and city support, we're going from fifty to thirty thousand on that, so we're bringing it down a little bit. Staff support, you're going to see this in both this and water. It's the year for uniforms, as we call it. So it's every other year, so every other year you're going to see an expense for uniforms in there. Our, our finance, financial manager and human resources manager runs that program and has worked it out, that she has it down pretty, pretty good and so we can, we can predict this in our budgets, you know, two years at a time, basically. Operations support is flat, that's the first page of three for public works. Left side, any questions or comments on this page? Second page, supplies are, are staying pretty flat. Utility services, you see some details there, the cartograph on there replaces the other system, so it really has kind of a net, net zero effect to that. So utility services are pretty flat. Maintenance services are increased a, a little bit for some aging equipment, you see some maintenance of heating and AC. But then also, just to call out something to show you that this is a motion and a vote by council, motion from place five to add five hundred dollars, and that, that is where it's reflected in there, ma'am. So that's, that's an increase there from what you, what you had in front of you, but you submitted, or you, you filed a budget that had that five hundred dollars in and that's where that, and that's where it shows. Operating equipment flat and parks committee is up a little bit. They did a, they've done a fantastic job of also not only doing what they're doing out at the park and, and, and working with public works and admin, but also to detail exactly what, what their desires are for next year to make our parks even better and that's what that is. So that's the second page, two of three for public works, left side, comments or questions?
No, thank you again for the bump up.
Yes, ma'am. She was off mic and so I'll just repeat.
Great, thank you again for the bump up.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Right side? Third and final page for public works is the capital outlay and you see zeros, the capital outlay last year because we bought Bobcat and, and we increased in park security equipment, that went into that budget. So the, that's why you don't see anything in the capital outlays because we don't have any plans right now on any capital outlays. What you do see is a two point five percent. This actually is different than the, the sheet that was in front of you before, I tried to call that out to you. It did say two point four, I know that's really small, but just want to make sure you know, that when we put the five hundred dollars, it bumped it over to two point five. So it's two point five, but that said, the equity and step program, when the money gets put into there, will increase public works expenditures by a little bit more and they'll be up from two point five. And we don't know what it'll be, but it'll be a little bit more. So that said, right side, questions, comments for public works overall or for the page eleven? Okay. And so I'm trying to burn through this and I said that I would stop and ask if they, if y'all had anything for the department heads. And so I'm going to back up just a little bit. First, I'm going to say, do you have anything for public works? Right side, left side? So forgive me for, I hope I don't confuse anybody, but I'm just going to go backwards here and I'm going to say, do you have any comments or questions for admin on the expenditures? Okay? And then do you have any questions or comments for admin for the court? Because admin can, will represent the court, okay? And then police department, do you have any questions or comments for the chief on police department, right side? Left side? Okay. Apologize for that. Okay, so now the next one is page twelve, it's community center and pretty flat, we're keeping it pretty flat. This is one of the very few places that actually was, was affected by, by COVID and a, a little bit of a loss because we weren't renting out the, weren't renting out the community event center. But not the, not significant, not, not significant, not something that we couldn't, we couldn't absorb in the rest of the budget with some savings that we had. I know some, some cities around here, just for reference, some, you know, the, the mixed blessing of not having a lot of income from, from retail and sales tax is that the way the economy is going, the cities that have a lot of retail income have really been hit hard, whereas our, our income not being very much at all from, from retail, it hasn't really hit our budget that much at all. But this is one small place that it did just a little bit. But overall, community center is, is pretty flat and optimistic that we'll, that we'll be able to get back to what we've been doing and be able to then reinvest some of the stuff from the community center into the improvements in the community center. So if you have any questions on, first of all, on the sheet, any, any questions, right side? Left side? And admin also representing the community center, any questions or comments for the community center to admin? Okay. Moving on to item, excuse me, to number thirteen, and that's general fund library expenditures. A little bit, a little bit different here because, yeah, we have the, the, the increase in personnel services and then the increase in all of the medical and all that, but recall that Linda, Ms. Crossland, or is she? She's hiding, she's in the corner and I can't see her, sorry. Hi Linda. She is kind enough to then not take those benefits. And so we put them in and then when we do the amended budget, we take them, we take them back out, but that, it still needs to be put in there. So that's why you see an increase over the amended budget, but it's pretty flat and just the rate, the, the increases that are standard in all the personnel areas that you'll see from twenty-twenty and then twenty-twenty-one versus the amended twenty-twenty-one. Also, the only other thing that's increased is ebook expenditures doubled and obviously that's a great plan and something that's being used pretty heavily with the situation we're in now and conditioning some people to use more ebooks anyway. So increase in that. It could go, it, it, it may go down because of the benefits that I just talked about, but it may go up with the personnel program enhancements that we're talking about. So questions, comments on the sheet? On the left side, questions? And Ms. Crossland's over there, if you have any questions or comments for the library, starting on the right side? Great. That is the general fund budget. You know, I said that we would do these one at a time, but I, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to take that back because it occurs to me that I want to make sure that we have the public hearing before you vote. So I'm going to go through all of them and you're just going to have to keep track of them, sorry. But because this is a public hearing, I want to make sure you hear before you do any voting. So any questions or comments overall with the general fund before we move on to the water fund? Left side? Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, sir. Okay. Let's move on to the water fund. First of all, the water fund front page is the roll-up and you see the months of expenditures, that's before we take out any, any money to, to fund the programs like we talked about, but we'll still be, have more than acceptable reserves. And you see expenditures being pretty flat and revenues being pretty flat as well, but being very conservative in both, both areas, I would say. So moving on to the second page, which is the revenue page. You see, we're on track right now to have the numbers that we have here and actually possibly more, but we're, we're still remaining conservative about the income for the water company. And then meter installation fees, basically, we're, we're saying that we're pretty built out. Remember, that's just for people, new, new development, new, new homes. So we're saying it's pretty, it's pretty flat now, just with some, a few, with the, the build-out being reduced, I guess is the way to put it. The EAA and Trinity accounts, those are pass-throughs, that's why you see pluses and minuses, the way we account for it in this, in this budget is we put them right next to each other. So the money going in and the money coming out. So the, the management fees go to the account, the groundwater conservation district fee goes into, goes, comes from the revenue of that. Drop in interest rates is significant and so we're, we're putting that into the plan to keep it conservative. And so very conservative, a point, point three in the revenue proposed. Left side, questions or comments for water fund? Moving on to Moving on to expenditures, there's three pages for the water fund expenditures. First page, a lot of the same stuff, with one exception, and that is the salary, the, excuse me, the salary, the wage and salary step program and merit, excuse me, and equity program is here, as opposed to all the other ones you saw, because the water fund is its own, its own entity, so the, the money that we're putting as an assumption is already there. Then, of course, that's the last part of personnel service is pretty standard, how that's increased. So you see, there's an increase if you go from 2020 to 2021. Why is it such a big jump from 2020 amended to 2021? Because we've been short people. So both water clerk and a water foreman, we've been short both of those. So same kind of dilemma the chief's been going through, Mr. Parsons has been going through. And then professional services, fees and city support services, all pretty flat, that's page three, the first of three pages for expenditures, questions or comments for water fund expenditures? Right side, left side? Okay, second page of expenditures, up top, uniform year, as I told you before, cartograph is in there, in the middle there, and we have some computer hardware that they're paying their share of the upgrades that we talked about for, for our servers and security and, and accountability and all that, absolutely necessary. And then supplies are flat. Gas going back to normal, it, it was reduced because they weren't driving around as much, but we're going back to normal with that for the budget. And maintenance service is flat, and operating equipment, pretty flat as well. So that's the second of three pages for expenditures, left side, questions or comments on this page? And then the last of the three pages for expenditures for the water fund, top part, other costs back to normal with the testing, just very important stuff there. The standards in the debt service, again, they don't contribute into the INS, they have to service the debt out of the water fund, and that's what you see there, that's the debt service. Notice it goes down a little bit, because as we pay off, we can pay a little bit less interest, just like you do on your mortgage. Bad debt being flat, and, and then capital outlays are zero, we don't have any big, big capital outlays expected. So pretty stable budget, 0.2% compared to 2020. So questions or comments on the three pages or, and/or this page alone? Right side, left side? So going back to the front, you see how all that rolls up to what they have for expenditures and revenues, I talked about that already. And what I'd ask now is, do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Parsons, our water fund manager, left side? Ma'am, sir, sir, ma'am, sir. Okay, so that's the water fund that we'll be looking at if you want to, if you want to approve that. Next one is our... Yeah, I just want to make sure. Next one is the interest and sinking fund. This, this is pretty, pretty easy, because there's not a lot of discretion in this. We got bills, we got the bills to pay, the debts we got to pay, and how we're paying them. What we do have is, I want to just make sure that everybody knows how this ends up flowing. So the revenues, how we pay, pay for the debt, it comes out of both the transfers from the water fund, as you just saw, as well as taxes, and then there is a little bit of, of money that comes in from interest and delinquent taxes and that kind of thing, but that's where all that comes in to pay the interest and pay our bonds. But if you look at the top, the first one was the series nine, it was a refi, it was, it was refied into 2017, which is actually the last one. That's why it's zero. So next year, this will fall off of this list, but since we go back two years, it's carrying that 185 and 3,700 that you see there. But that's why that's there. So it's zero, because we refied it at a significantly lower cost to the city, and that's, the refi is down at the 2017 series. The 2012 series is actually what we all know as the 2013 CIP, and you see when that'll be paid off, and you see what the balance is on that. And it's carried, the percentages of general fund and water fund are on there, the 56 and 44 respectively. The next one is the 2020 refi, and the 20, the 2002 and 2005 are no longer listed on here, because they're so far away that this became zeros. But way back when, those two were refied into a series 2012 certificate of obligation that has a balance of 625,000 being paid off in 2024, the first one of our, our debts to be paid off, and it's 2024. And you see, it's 100% by the general fund. The next one is the 2015, which is the 2015 CIP, and carried by the percentages of 58 and 42 by the general and water funds, final payment out in 2034, and you see what's left over. And then the last one is the 17, which was the refi from the one up top, and you see what the balance of that is, it's carried by the water fund and what's left over. So you see that the total debt, and we, and I showed that on one of the slides that I had, was 11, 11,935,000, is the remaining balance as of 9/30/21. We're, we're paying off the, paying off the debt in, in smooth fashion, and you see that there is a little bit that's left over. I asked the question, can't we throw that into one of the, one of the bonds, and like they always do to the non-finance guy, they laugh at me and say, no, that's not allowed. But nevertheless, that's, that's where we sit now with interest and sinking, and that will be also up for your approval when we get to the approval phase. Oh, sorry, questions or comments? Left side on INS, interest and sinking. Last one is capital improvement fund, and it's, it carries the capital improvement plan monies when we have them, but it also will carry some balances, and that's why you'll see this carry for a while, anyway. Made a little bit of interest considerably less than we planned and expected, because obviously what's been going on. There's a miscellaneous line there, that's just kind of a contingency line, in case we have to pay a fee or something. If there's nothing in the budget, we'd be strapped for having to do a budget amendment, literally for, for our financial manager to pay like a $10 fee to the bank or something. So we just put that in there, and that's the $50. You see some impact fees that are going in there, and those are obviously restricted for the, the water lines, the street impact fees, and they'll sit in there until we're, until we get to those projects. So not a lot, a lot, not a lot of movement, not a lot of discretion in this at all, but it is still a budget, that's a separate budget that's audited, and you have to, you have to, as the, as the council consider and approve this one as well. So, starting right side, questions or comments for capital improvement fund? Okay, so that are, that is our entire budget roll-up of the four budgets. And next, what we're going to do is, we're going to hold the public hearing. I'll tell you, the public hearing, you don't have to have signed up to speak, you have three minutes to speak. When you come up, please say your name and address, that doesn't count on your three minutes. And then when you're finished speaking, over on the table where Ms. Spencer is standing, and she'll raise her hand, so everybody knows who, her, she has a sign-up sheet, we ask you to sign your, your name and, and address on that as well. One more thing I want to just say, want to make sure everybody knows, is because of COVID, we told people that if they wanted to, they could submit a written comment that normally they would be in here saying, but since they, for whatever reason, may not are, want to or may not be able to come here, we offered that up, and we, we do have some written comments. At the end of this hearing, before I close it, I'll ask Ms. Spencer to go to the podium and read those. That said, if any of the people that sent in written comments are here, and you speak, then we won't read your comments, because that would mean that you would get two chances at the podium, in essence. So if you sent in comments and you're here, then, and you speak, then we're not going to read your comments, and obviously, we're, we're going to, we're going to know who's speaking. So that said, I am going to open up the hearing at 7:21, and ask if anyone would like to speak. Please come on up to the podium. We have somebody that's going to clean, clean the mic in the area right after, so we're, we're making sure that we are, we're maintaining all the CDC guidelines and, and keeping things clean.
I don't really have anything specifically, too much to speak about. I was here the other night, and I did speak, and I did also send in the comments, so I won't take up time doing that tonight. I did have a couple of quick questions. On the water meter modernization, whatever we're going to be doing with that, is that a digital thing? Is that what you would classify as a smart meter? Is that what we're talking about, changing those to a smart meter?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you might want to do a little further checking on that, because that can be a health hazard. I, for my CPS meter, I went to CPS, paid them $100, so I did not have to have a smart meter, and then I paid $20 extra a month, so that they have to come out to read it, because that type of thing does expose you to a lot of extra magnetic field exposure, which is not good generally overall. You'll have to do your own research on that. And then I just wondered, if the garden home and commercial development is approved at some point, will that require the city to purchase more acre feet of water?
Ma'am, now, now, tonight, this public hearing is about the budget. So, but we'll stretch this a little bit and say that when we have developers come in, we have them bring in water rights. So we don't expect that as people come in to develop, that we're going to have to provide them with...
Well, maybe I ought to clarify that and say wastewater, then, since that was part of the discussion, and that would be part of the budget, since they wanted the city to pay for that.
Okay, so first of all, your time's still clicking, so if you've got more things you want to say, but the other is, I'm not sure I understand your question. Are you asking...
How would you like me to, I'm not sure how you want me to clarify it.
Are we going to pay for their wastewater system?
If the development for the garden homes and the commercial development, which are two completely separate sections there, are approved, since they wanted the wastewater stuff to be paid for by the city, developer and the builder did, would that require us having, the city having to purchase more acre feet of water for the city? That was the question. And then the other quick question was, where can we find the state's requirement, or the new, their new result of saying that the city or municipalities cannot require specific types of materials to be used for building, et cetera, et cetera? I'd like to just be able to look that up and read, read that for myself, because I was not aware that that had been done by the state.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I just want the site, the location, so I can go and research it myself.
Okay, this is a budget public hearing, we're not talking about building materials for that, but we will definitely get you that information, okay?
Okay, you're misunderstanding what I'm asking, I guess.
I think I am.
Yeah.
We, we require developers to bring water rights, and anybody connecting to the, the pending wastewater system will pay to connect to it and pay for the system, absolutely. The city's not going to pay them, they, and, and you said the developer asked for us to pay for something. The developer has not asked us to pay for anything.
It was specifically stated last night at the meeting.
Okay, ma'am, to be fair to everybody else, we can't, you, you've got to be done now.
Okay, because that definitely...
So if you would, please go over to the table and write your name and address, ma'am?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sign up here.
Okay, anyone else?
My name is Kurt Carter, I live at 21911.
Hang on just a second, sir, I don't think your mic is on.
My name is Kurt Carter, I live at 21911, Masale Quarter Drive. Just like to say thank you to the mayor and to the council for your service. I believe that our state and our nation was based on citizen volunteers, and I think that that's a, a, a fine thing. And that gets to the point of, in the, in the proposed budget, you talk to potential stipend for council members and for the mayor, neither, none of you would benefit potentially from that. And I don't really, I personally don't believe that, based on our city's size and the composition of our city, that it really makes sense to pay a stipend to the mayor and the city council members. Quite frankly, if you're talking about a little more than, you know, maybe $500 a year for a city council member, that's not a, a large amount of money, I don't even, for what it's worth. So I would, I don't believe that that would be necessary. I think you'll find more than enough people that are willing to volunteer, just as you did, for the positions that you're in, and, and run for election for that. My second comment has to do with the, and I'm not sure of the proper terminology, but you use pressurized wastewater or pressurized sanitation system, so I like some, some type of sewer, or some type of sewer treatment that would be put in on the other side of 2252, between 2252 and the railroad tracks. I don't really know a whole lot about that. I would like to know more before we say we're going to make a project and spend money and invest in that. What you proposed sounds reasonable enough, but really what you proposed is a self-licking ice cream cone, we'll pay for it out of the general fund, and we'll pay for it out of the water, and, oh, we'll pay ourselves back from the water. Well, unless you have a lot of development and put a lot of high-density homes in there, you're not going to, you may not get enough to pay the city back, which in essence will mean that all the current residents and the homeowners that are on septic systems will end up paying that bill. At least that's, seems that way to me. And I just think we, we, the rest of the residents of the city ought to have an opportunity to really understand that particular project before the city invests in it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Please, if you will, sign your name over at the table. Thank you. Anyone else?
Ken Kneiper, 8891 Shane Dahl Road. I've lived here since 2003. I've seen a lot of city council members come and some leave. I do not have a problem with the, the stipends for you, because you do put in a lot of extra time with your packets and having to study those and come to a city council prepared. So preparation time is on your time. So if you go, and while you're here, some of us don't have children and some do, well, guess what? They need childcare, so those also come out of your hide. So having a little bit of a comeback is not a problem to me. I come to all the city council meetings, maybe I, because I'm retired, I find the time to do that, but I know what's going on with the sewer system and how it's going to be funded. Because as people hook up, they're going to pay for that hookup, for both the grinder pumps and for your lines you're putting in. So we're going to get that money back. The developer's going to take his end, and he's going to have to pay for it. It's like the water. They bring in their water, that's how George Ranch was developed, that developer had to bring in enough water for all of our lots. The Woods of Garden Ridge, their developer brought in water rights. So I have been around long enough and come to these meetings enough, that I understand how a lot of this happens, and I do not have a problem with any of the budgets for this year, for this coming fiscal year. I think, I heard at city council, you're not planning on raising our taxes, so our taxes aren't going to go up. If my taxes don't go up, and I'm paying for more benefits to go to people and to get things done within our city, it'll put, make that area much more, it's not going to be high-density homes, it's for commercial use. So you're not going to get high-density homes in there, you're going to get commercial. And commercial will pay to put in stuff, and they'll pay more money for their lot, where commercial, where residential will not. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies, for your time.
Thanks, sir. If you would, please sign up on the thing. Anyone else? I'm going to wait and give them a chance, clean, clean the place off, just in case somebody's waiting for that, too. somebody's waiting for that, too. Anyone else? If anyone else would like to speak? So, what's going to happen is if no one else in here would like to speak during this public hearing, remember, there are also the citizens' comments at the end, but if no one else would like to speak, our city secretary, Ms. Spencer, is going to read the comments that were submitted via email for people that, that either didn't come or, I don't know, you might even be here and you don't, and you'd rather read it. So, Ms. Spencer, floor's yours.
Thanks. I just don't want to have feedback between the mics. Thank you. First comment is from Paris Dudley, 9290, Cinchona Trail. It is time that citizens decided to become aware of what is going on in city government. We are general law city, not home rule. There is a tremendous difference. Larry, in his deceptive ways, compares Garden Ridge with home rule cities with a population far in excess of 5,000 residents. General law cities were designed by the legislature to present, to prevent small-town politicians from rewarding themselves with ridiculous compensation. This is where we are headed. If Larry and crew are in need of additional income, perhaps they should seek gainful employment and leave the city positions open to volunteers. Since 1972, the mayor and city council served without compensation, and we survived just fine. These people knew the compensation when they ran for office. The budget presented is beyond belief. We have a city administrator, overpaid city secretary, assistant city secretary, library staff, court staff, and water staff, and police department of 15 to 17 people. We are a city of 3,500 citizens. If we were a business, we would be bankrupt, as some staff are familiar. We are not a home rule big city. We are not, we are a small, quiet bedroom community in a rural area. This is not Larry AFB, wake-up people. By the way, there are more homes for sale in Garden Ridge now than there ever has been in our entire history. Way to go, Larry and Prince. Lee Schick, 21816, Center Hills. If and when they own up to the fact they have water bill issues, I'd consider it. My bill went up $80, and we were gone for two weeks during the last bill period and didn't change a thing. But all they can say is, do you have an irrigation system? Yes, I do, but again, didn't change any settings, and was gone half the billing period. No showers, no washing machine, no toilet flushing, no dishwasher, no sink use. How does this bill go up? David and Dawn Hatch, 8377, Twisted Oaks. We are against city council and mayor voting itself a monthly stipend. Stipend is another word for wage. Granted, it may be a small amount now, but volunteers do not get paid for their volunteer work. The fact that surrounding cities and other agencies/military provide stipends is not a factor in Garden Ridge business. The mayor and the city council members all have access to what they need from the city in order to do their volunteer work. The mayor's position has been provided with a nice office with a small meeting area. Will they call this stipend an allowance, a salary, a wage, or reimbursement for expenses? This has not been explained, nor was it explained why it's coming from the water department. Very opaque. What happens when other commissioners and the people on other committees and the various other volunteers in the city start asking for stipends? It's called "What About Me?", and then it's a double standard. Any parent with more than one child knows the principle of this issue. This from Dawn. I've never been paid for any volunteer work I do anywhere, and I've never expected any pay or stipends either. Volunteering is giving your time and labor for community service freely. Christie and John Haber, 21120, Forest Water Circle. My husband, John Haber, and I, both against stipends for the mayor and council. It's just another door being opened that might not be able to be closed. These positions have always been on a volunteer basis, and I don't believe that should stop. Annette Cox, 9657, Curry Way. No. 92, David C. Ringel, 9234, Blazing Star Trail. To the esteemed members of the city council, I ask, what is a volunteer? The dictionary spells it out plainly with noun, a person who freely offers to take part in an enterprise or undertake a task. Verb, freely offer to do something. Garden Ridge has been run and supported by volunteers since 1972. It's a point of pride that we can say we don't ask for payment to support and defend our neighbors. Our governing body has been designed to have a city manager and staff who are paid to handle the executive tasks associated with running our city. The legislative controlling body has always been made up of volunteers, because it is widely known and accepted that when you put money in the equation, corruption follows. Our government in Garden Ridge has always tried to keep a spotless white apron of purity around its lawmakers and representatives by using only volunteers that receive their payment in the form of humility, charity, and a common love of their fellow citizens. Money has never entered the equation. You, as the current governing body of Garden Ridge, have decided to take up the idea that a little money can't hurt, and you want citizens to pay a stipend to entice new lawmakers into our midst, because you lack the belief that anyone would want to do a job like yours for no money. Why did you take the job you have now? Was it for money? I believe it is wrong to turn our government into a pay-for-loyalty-and-sacrifice model. It is a path that is best not trodden. In truth, your opinion speaks that you believe you should be paid for your own volunteer work should you be re-elected to your position. A volunteer is not paid in money and never has been. When you bring money into the situation, you are no longer a volunteer, and you, and you trade that white apron for a dirty fraud. I would hope that you would reconsider including a stipend for council members in the upcoming budget and remain volunteers and not pay to do that. Paint the issue whatever color you like. It is still a stain upon the apron of our good city to pay money for that, which should be given freely, in respect to your service and sacrifices. Janice Gale Petro, 22023, Deer Canyon Drive. I am against the proposed stipends the mayor is putting in the budget that will draw from the water and general funds. Once proposals are approved, there's no going back, and the stipends become salaries. The judge, judge, give them an inch and they'll take a mile, is preposterous of the mayor and council, as evidenced by the following examples. One, questionable discussion with citizens of over $50,000 for the slaughter of deer. Two, undisclosed discussions Larry had with CISD prior to the approval of the location of Davenport High School. Three, undisclosed discussions Larry had with Oberman for the approval of outlandish variances for garden homes. To be continued. Four, and now he is proposing stipends for himself and the council, which will lead to salaries. Lisa Richter, 9241, Garden Ridge Drive. I would like to address the issue of stipends for the mayor and council. While I absolutely appreciate the work they all do for the city, I am not in favor of initiating stipends. While it's a relatively small amount for the council members initially, it opens the door for increases in the future with, which may not be so small. Then we have commission members who want stipends, and committee members, library volunteers, and so on. And why not? They all work hard and make valuable contributions to our city. They are volunteers. That is why not. I also don't agree with the stipend being more than 10 times greater for the mayor than the council members. Does that position put in more than 10 times the work? It shouldn't. That's not the way our system of government was designed, and it is our city administrator who does the majority of the day-to-day management of our city's business, and that is a paid position. It was never the intended purpose of our mayor to be a full-time job. We are a small city, and it's not necessary. If this stipend is intended to add value to the positions, $50 a month is a pretty demeaning value, and also doesn't, won't discourage corruption. An individual gains value in this position from the generosity of their community service, and if an individual is corrupt, they will be such no matter how much they are paid. Is this stipend designed to reimburse the individual for their expenses? Do, do we not have assistance to submit expense reports so they may be reimbursed for approved expenses? If we don't, we certainly should. I also have concerns about the source of the stipends. Our water company was purchased on bonds and was written to function financially independent from our city. How can we divert funds from the water company back to the city? If these stipends come partly from the water company, and those receiving the stipends technically water employees, aren't those, are those receiving the stipends technically water employees? I don't believe they can be elected officials in that case. This is murky territory at best and should be avoided. Did we raise water rates to compensate for this? These are questions that are raised by this type of action. There is constant talk about the need to bring more revenue to the city. This comes up every time the master plan and development is discussed. We need more revenue. We can't sustain in our city on our current revenue and so on. So, why do we add nearly $10,000 of unnecessary spending to pay stipends for positions that have functioned for 48 years on a volunteer basis? I would encourage the council to look carefully at our budget and rein in spending rather than worry so much about increasing revenue by leaps and bounds. We must first look at how our tax dollars are spent and cut back on excessive expenditures and not add new ones that aren't necessary. Shelby Trial, 21657, Forest Water Circle. I am opposed to paying the mayor a stipend of $6,000 per year and $600 per year to city council members. The amount of time the mayor spends working on city issues is worth at least $60,000 per year. Perhaps city council should vote on raising the tax rate so that they can add an assistant city administrator position to the budget and also add the loaded cost of retirement savings and medical benefits. I believe the city is getting a bargain with the pittance they are proposing as a stipend in the budget. Now, you'll hear people say that these are volunteer positions, and that's about the only thing they've gotten right on social media. However, the last time I looked, none of these people have ever served the city in a volunteer position. The hypocrisy is overwhelming. I think a lot of the social media frustration from at least some of the candidates who ran in the last election stemmed from their being fined by the Texas Ethics Commission for violating election laws. They were the ones accusing their opponents of wrongdoing and unethical behavior, but yet they were the only ones found to have violated election laws. More hypocrisy. As someone who has volunteered for years in some capacity for the city, I urge those who are complaining about the value of volunteers to step up and volunteer. Thank you. John Petro, 22023, Deer Canyon Drive. I'm not in favor of pay for the mayor and city council. The political climate has taken a turn for the worse these last few years. Deer-killing, tiny garden homes, extended planning for commercial enterprises, even a hotel. Now salaries for the mayor and city council. Enough already. Martha Stipp, 21007, Cedar Branch. I would like to address an issue the city council is considering adding to the budget that would go into effect after the May 2021 city election. The council is considering paying the mayor and city council members a stipend for their services. Since the creation of the city of Garden Ridge, we have been a city of volunteers. It is a tradition that the city leaders are proud to speak of at meetings. We are a small city run by a city administrator. It is her job to deal with the day-to-day needs of running the city. She is supposed to do the work and research, which she then submits to the city council for discussion and approval. Our city administrator is paid to do the work. If the mayor or the council members choose to go beyond their job descriptions to do more than is required, that is commendable. That is their choice, and they should not expect to be financially compensated for their efforts. I understand that the stipend suggested would be $9,400 in 2022. It would be $500 a month, annually $6,000 for the mayor, and around $600 annually for each city council member. Why would the mayor get so much more than a council member? They all have to go to extra meetings. After all, the mayor's job description states he leads the meetings, and he does not even vote unless there is a tie. By the way, if the city decides to give stipends to the mayor and council, shouldn't the various commissioners also get a stipend? That only seems fair. I know it sounds elitist, but the fact is Garden Ridge is one of the most affluent cities in Kamau County. We are a city with homes on large lots with prices well above the average home price. It takes considerable financial resources to live here. I feel the amount considered for the stipends will not significantly impact the finances of those wishing to seek office. Let's keep our civic service to our city as volunteerism. Use any stipend money for more important issues in the city. I suggest this issue be tabled for the time being. Let's wait to see if the census number is set to be released soon will change the type of government we have in Garden Ridge. If we go over 5,000 residents, we will be able to vote on important issues such as stipends or allowing garden homes into our city. Wait until the majority is able to decide. As a 3:00 PM today, a survey on Nextdoor that was put up less than 24 hours ago shows 75% of the responses were against giving the mayor and city council members a stipend at this time. 25% of the responses were for the stipend to the mayor and city council members to begin in 2021. I suggest everyone on Nextdoor go and read all the comments concerning the proposed city budget. The proposed budget is on the city website. Stay informed. Knowledge is power. Stay involved in your city government and decisions. That is all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Spencer. Okay, so, that concludes the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:45. And I'm going to move on to item B, which is the adoption of the budget. So, I'm going to go back to the beginning and say we'll first start with the general fund budget. Could you go on the mic, please?
I, oh, I'm sorry. I hit it again. Beg your pardon. I have a statement, a comment I'd like to make prior to voting on the budgets. It is budget-related.
Go right ahead.
Okay. First of all, I'd like everyone to know that I compiled this last week. So, my statement is, it's important to me that at this time, I should clarify my concern about the stipend vote from last week's city council meeting. I admit to not being comfortable with last week's decision about the proposed stipend, and although at that time, I voted along with everyone else to proceed, that is not what I believe to be the right vote. For the record, and so no one thinks I've been influenced either by social media posts, citizens' comments, personal contacts, phone calls, nor emails, this is solely my decision, and I have not been influenced by anything but my own conscience. I even had a discussion with a city official after last week's council meeting and explained my, quote, "voter's remorse," end quote, then, and my opinion has not changed. Even though I would not be financially impacted till I run again in spring 2022, I do not believe it should be implemented in this year's budget. Thank you for your understanding.
Okay. You can turn your mic off. Thank you. Anyone else? Want to make any statements? So, now, let's go to, again, item 4B, the adoption of fiscal year 2020 budgets. First one is 3.1, and it is the general fund. Any discussion or a motion to, to approve Resolution 465082020 for the general fund?
I move to approve Resolution 465082020, the general fund budget.
I have a motion from place three to approve the general fund budget and Resolution 465082020. Can I get a second? Place one with a second. And I'll open up further discussion or questions, starting over on the right side. Ma'am. Sir. Ma'am. Okay. So, I have a motion to approve the general fund budget, and I, from place three with a second from place one. And no further discussion. All in favor? Aye.
Opposed?
And I have place one, two, three, and four are yes. And all those opposed?
Opposed.
Place five is opposed. Motion passes four to one. Next is Resolution 46082020. It's item 3.2, and this is for the water fund, the water company. Any comments or questions before I launch into the vote? Or if none, can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve Resolution 466082020, the water company operational budget.
Okay, I have a motion from place four. Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion from place, or, excuse me, a second from place three. Any further discussion or questions, starting left side?
Nope.
Okay, motion from place four, second from place three, Resolution 466082020 for the water company operation and maintenance fund budget. All in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed.
So, again, one, two, three, and four are yes, and five is opposed. Motion passes four to one. Next is item 3.3, Resolution 4670820, interest and sinking fund budget. Any, barring any questions, can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the interest and sinking fund.
Place five with a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second from place one. Any further discussion or questions, right side? Left side? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Last one is 3.4, Resolution 4680820, capital improvements fund budget. Either discussion or a motion to approve?
Move to approve capital fund budget.
Place five with a motion to approve. Can I get a second?
Second.
Place two with a second. Any further discussion or questions, left side? Right side? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Okay, thank you. Budgets are approved. Again, as I, as I stated in the beginning of our meeting, that I'm going to declare 4B, item 4B, and item 4C removed from the agenda because there's no, there's no variance request or specialty permit request, and there's no recommendation from our, our Planning and Zoning Commission. Next up is item number five, citizen comment period. This is, again, now, this is anything you want to talk about. It doesn't have to be about what we talked about in here. And it's limited, it's two minutes. You do not have to have signed up ahead of time. If you came up to speak about the topic, you're gonna come up and speak. I'm gonna ask you to not speak about it again. But if you have something different you want to talk about, if you've already spoken, or if you haven't, or if you haven't spoken at all, by all means, please come up. And same, same thing applies. When you're done, please go over and sign on the sheet. Or, does anyone like to speak? Item number five.
Ken Knapper, 8891, Shane Tall Road. "Mr. Mayor, City Council, prior to the location of Davenport High School, the mayor never attended his one school board meeting. He was as shocked as many residents were of Garden Ridge when the school district moved the, but this high school from Interstate 35 to 3009. Having spoken to some of the teachers and some of the coaches, are they ever happy with those changes because of the fact they have room for their students to move around and to do some of the extracurricular activities they need to do? So I don't believe that was a fair charge, convinced, saying that the mayor was in cahoots with CISD. Matter of fact, after being at coffee with the mayor, I know at times he is not happy with Kamau ISD on a lot of things. He and I don't see eye to eye on Kamau ISD, but that's fine. We can agree to disagree. If you have a problem with somebody, I have a problem with doing it by email. If you can't come up and speak in person and want to assassinate somebody, that's not right. If you want to have a problem with the mayor, you got time to come up to City Hall Council to speak, or you can come up to City Hall and speak when the City Hall is open from 9:00 to 12:00, now during COVID. Be an adult. Children write notes and say things on email. Not adults. Adults do things in public, and they do it face to face. So, Mr. Mayor, I feel very, very badly about what has been said by that resident, because I know better, because I have been there in meetings with you, and you have been taking, you and I have had words, but yet we can communicate. Thank you."
Thanks, sir. Anyone else? And while we're waiting for him to clean, so we don't just watch him clean, is there anyone else that would like to speak when he's done cleaning? If you do, just please raise your hand. You don't have to get up until he's done. Anyone? Okay. So that me, and that is, I'm gonna close, item number five. And before we go into an executive session, I, I, I absolutely must say publicly that the budget is a pretty Herculean undertaking, especially for our financial manager. But she's not the only one. Our city administrator and our department heads, there's a lot of back and forth. There's a lot of discussion on what we can do, what we can't do, how we're gonna do it, when we're gonna do it, how much is it gonna cost? When will we be able to pay for it? You know, it, it, it looks a bit, a little lazy when it's just on a few sheets, and we just talk about it for, for an hour or two. But I can assure you that a whole lot of work goes into this every year. And I sincerely appreciate the patience that they have with me as I ask question after question, and after we peel things back, and after we go, no, we can't do that, and when are we gonna do this, and why weren't we doing that? So there's, there's a lot of work that's involved with it. And they don't get, they don't get any, any real recognition or credit for it. Not that they need it or look for it, but I'm telling you that every one of these department heads, they don't just throw a couple of numbers on a, on a sheet and throw it over the transom and say, good luck. They, they put a lot of time and effort into it. And our city administrator and our financial manager demand that they put a lot of work into it. So, thank you, all of you, for, for doing that and for being here tonight, in fact, to be representing in case there were any questions. Appreciate it. Again, before we go into executive session, does anybody have anything? Because probably we'll clear out and...
Again, this year, I'd like to thank everybody that put together this budget for an excellent job. I know it's time-consuming, and I did say, I think, last month or last meeting, it seemed like it got easier for y'all. I know it didn't, but you're making it more, easier for us, maybe. But y'all did a great job. Thank you.
Anything else on the left side?
Uh, yes, for those of you who are not familiar with our budget microphone attendee, that might be Ryan. Yes? And he's, I just met him, and he's incredibly kind. He offered, he helped me with something at the park. Had no idea who I was or that I lived next door to his grandfather. So I went home and immediately told his grandfather. But thank you for your help.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go into an executive session. Folks, this is gonna be a very short executive session, but nonetheless, one is necessary. And since we cannot maintain social distance in the back, we do it out here, which means that we throw you out. I'm sorry about that, but that's the only way we can maintain the distance. It won't be very long. If you have any desire to come back in, what'll happen is if there's any action from the executive session, followed by the adjournment. So there's not a lot left of the agenda, but nonetheless, I wanted to just make sure you knew what was going on. So it is 7:57, and I'm gonna recess our special meeting, and we're gonna pick up the executive session. If everybody's okay with it, as soon as the room is cleared. Okay. Well, we'll, we'll take it five after. Okay, it is 8:19, and I am reconvening our, from our executive session into our city council special meeting Thursday, August 13th, 2020. Moving on, item number seven, business items. Are there any business items as a result of the executive session? Left side? Right side? Being none, I will now move on to adjournment and number, item number eight. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I get place three with a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second? Place four with a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of adjourned? Say aye. Any opposed? So we have place one, two, three, and four with a yes, and place five with a no. And we have a four to one vote. Motion passes. We are adjourned at 8:20. Thank you very much.